If we can get him moved right up front.
We'll do it right away.
Thank you, sir.
The October fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Doctor Vogt?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yeah.
Doctor Selly?
Air.
And Mr. Viera.
Yeah. We will now reset the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands, which stands one nation under God indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper and adequate electronic notice has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and the New Jersey Administrative Code Title Five, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section One Point Five Notice of Remote Public Meeting as required by law.
Proclamation of the recommendant acknowledging service for providing PPP for the Long Branch Police Fire EMS and First Aid during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Mayor Pallone will now do a proclamation.
Thank you, Council President, but Senator Gopel, if you're on, I know you wanted to read a proclamation from the state and if you're there, if you could go ahead, Senator.
Yes, Mayor. Hope you're doing well. Let me just grab it. Make sure Dr. Maynan is on. So thank you to the mayor and council for taking a moment to recognize the doctor. I'm sure we all wish we could be in person. She runs the the medical facility at the Long Branch School System, does an amazing job there, taking care of so many of the employees that work for the school district. So I have a resolution here on behalf of the Senate President and Speaker, which I will give to the doctor and in in person at some point. I'll just read briefly. The doctor reached out during the height of COVID nineteen and she said, you know, Ben, how can we help the police officers, the firemen, the EMTs in Long Branch? I want to get masks donated. I want to get face shields donated and immediately she got into donating thousands of pieces of PPE here in Long Branch and really did an incredible job to the point where she was emailing the Long Branch Police Department almost on a weekly basis, saying, I've got another sixty made. I've got another seventy made. In the height of March and April, when COVID nineteen was so high, the fact that she had all these responsibilities at the school district as their primary physician and in addition was trying to see what she can do really spoke volumes on why I thought she was worthy of a proclamation from the state. So I'll just read briefly. It is altogether proper and fitting for the New Jersey Legislature to honor Dr. Reika Menon and to acknowledge that as a woman of remarkable character and exceptional determination, now therefore being resolved by the Senate and General Assembly by the state of New Jersey that this legislature hereby puts into official record, Dr. Reika Menon pays tribute to her incredible record of service, leadership and commitment and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all of her endeavors. The duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Speaker, be transmitted into official record in the state of New Jersey, Trenton, New Jersey. And the resolution has her biography. I'm not going to read all of it. I'm going to give it to her, but I want to thank the city for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about, talk about Dr. Menon and your account that does an incredible job each and every day for the city of Long Branch. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Senator. And I, if you don't can bear with me, I just want to read the proclamation that we have for Dr. Menon from the city of Long Branch. A little more detail. Dr. Reika Menon embarked on a lifetime of community service where she began her studies in Jamaica and developed her medical school, medical skills in India and Malaysia before becoming chief resident and House Staff President at the Brooklyn Hospital Center. Dr. Menon now and became the Medical Director of Partnership Health Center in Long Branch, serving the Long Branch Board of Education or worked on the front lines of the pandemic without taking a break for over eight months. In addition to her work, she used her contacts to connect people who had lost their jobs during the pandemic with various companies and institutions and was so successful that she is developing a more formal job portal that will be available to people free of charge. Dr. Menon also organized the donation of over eighteen hundred face shields through Siemens Corporation, which she personally distributed along with her son Arjuna to five area hospitals, one of which was Monmouth Medical Center. She also donated face shields to our Long Branch City Police Department and First Aid squads, and she has distributed over three hundred and fifty face masks, four hundred and eighty bottles of water and a hundred and fifty T-shirts to the needy and homeless in Freehold and Long Branch. She is already organizing additional water supply and food deliveries for those in our area who continue to be in need. Now with that, I'd just like to say now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed by the mayor and city council, the city of Long Branch, that Dr. Reika Menon is a shining example of leadership through service and receives our profound gratitude for her dedication, generosity and service which has benefited the city of Long Branch. Thank you again, Senator. Thank you, Dr. Menon. Clerk, Council President, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Senator, and thank you, Dr. Man. Thanks for all you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well deserved.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to reading of the approval of the previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-three, twenty twenty.
Go move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance. Public hearing and final consideration, there is none. Ordinance for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty entitled ordinance amending a chapter three twenty-five entitled vehicle and traffic by amending section three twenty-five dash forty-three schedule seventeen loading zones of the code of the city of Long Branch Community Place. I need a motion to introduce onto the first reading as advertised and post according to law and set the public hearing for October twenty-eight, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty entitled ordinance amending various fees of contained in the chapter five entitled Administration of Government, Section Five Dash Seventeen Public Record and the chapter one eighty-one entitled Food Established and Retailment, Section One Eighty-one dash four License Fee of the Code of the City of Long Branch. I need a motion to introduce the first reading as advertised and post according to law and set the public set the public hearing for October twenty-eight, twenty twenty.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. This is the first reading of the ordinance twenty-three dash twenty entitled ordinance of the city of Long Branch, County of Monmouth, New Jersey, adopting amendments to the Oceanfront Broadway redevelopment plan. I need a motion to introduce to the first reading as advertised as unpost according to law and set the public hearing for October twenty-eight, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Public participation for the resolutions and general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Council President, can I just, um, before we go into the public comment, I just want to note what I noted at the beginning of the workshop session that we corrected two typos in ordinance two thousand and five dash twenty, replacing the reference to the mayor in two places with the council president, obviously recognizing the council president runs and controls the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyno.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Calls. If any member of the public has any comments to make, please dial star nine on your phone and a representative will call you by the last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone number ends in one nine eight. Go ahead.
Mr. IT man, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, sir.
Madam Clerk requesting one minute notification. Vincent Lapore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Last week, people in this city received their tax bills. Many are now realizing that Team Pallone can't be counted on to do anything to address their property tax burden. For the last three months, including the last council meeting, I presented reforms to the tax methodology for council and mayor to act upon. Yet, another few weeks go by, another council meeting tonight, and Team Pallone has yet to take action. During tonight's executive session agenda, under contract negotiations was a presentation on Seaview Towers by Nick Graviano, the city planning and building director. At the last planning board meeting, the master plan reexamination report was submitted by Mr. Graviano, but not adopted. In his presentation, Mr. Graviano stated that the number one concern of residents was tax abatements. Mr. Graviano responded to those concerns by saying, no further oceanfront tax abatements will occur unless, and I emphasize the word unless, there is a substantial public amenity provided by the developer. Nothing puts as much salt in the wound, that wound being increased tax bills, than the salt that is represented by granting further tax abatements to wealthy developers. It's bad enough that Seaview Towers was custom spot zoned for Kushner as a redevelopment zone to qualify for municipal tax abatements by Team Pallone. But considering another quid pro quo thirty-year tax abatement for the singular benefit of Charles Kushner in exchange for a still unknown public amenity is inexcusable and unwarranted. So tonight, just like we saw on Lower Broadway, which also sits in a federal tax break opportunity zone and where Team Pallone gave Kushner an additional thirty-year municipal tax abatement and a long-term redevelopment area bond, tonight, it's reasonable to believe that another thirty-year tax abatement is being considered for Kushner's proposed oceanfront luxury development at, again, the soon-to-be former site of Seaview Towers, which is also located in a federal tax break opportunity zone. One can only conclude that the council's actions, taken in their capacity as the city's redevelopment agency, must be viewed as an unqualified failure. More than one billion dollars of residential development along our oceanfront and this council still remains unable to successfully negotiate with wealthy developers to deliver projects that do not require to subsidize those developments with additional public assistance in the form of another long-term tax abatement.
Mr. Lapore, you have one minute, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. No more tax abatements. Isn't that what Team Pallone campaigned on? Now, we have Team Pallone stating tax abatements will take place on a quid pro quo basis. The people of this city are continually being backstabbed by this mayor and council, Team Pallone. It's becoming quite apparent that the only way to get rid of tax abatements is to now get rid of Team Pallone sooner rather than later. What we have two years and three months down the road from July first, two thousand and eighteen is a continuation of the former administration junk government.
Council President, I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Lapore, but I just want to point out two very quick things. First is that there's no tax abatement being considered or discussed for the Seaview Tower site and the Kushners aren't connected to that site at all. So I just wanted to make it clear and and I think that Mr. Lapore misrepresented what I I think or or possible that the planning director misspoke. I think that council's position has been no more tax abatements on the waterfront, period, and no tax abatements anywhere else without some substantial public benefit. So I I just want to be clear that for anybody who thinks that what Mr. Lapore said about the Kushners or about the tax abatement might actually be true, that it's not actually true.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you, Mr. Reyno. Obviously, you articulated that very well and you also see a resolution there for the bluffs, which also makes very clear right in the resolution that there's no tax abatement attached to that as well. But thank you.
Okay, caller whose phone number ends in three eight five. Go ahead.
Laura Tarlo, fifty-two Baruch Drive. Well, first of all, thank you to Dr. Menon for her efforts. On behalf of the city and the county, it's quite commendable. I'd like to ask Mr. Jackson in light of the quarterly tax bills that are out, if he could provide for transparency purposes, two charts. One chart that lists by type of property, condos, multifamily, single businesses, the total number of properties that taxable properties that fit in each of those categories, the number of those properties that saw reduction in their tax bill, the number that had the same exact tax bill and the number that incurred an increase. The second chart, similar by the type of properties, to the percent of the change. How many multifamily units, the percent of dollar change that they had down, no change or an increase? And the bottom line, total revenue change from all of this. I understand that the tax rate has remained the same, but the assessment is what is causing all these differences. Are these charts feasible to be produced and perhaps attached to the admittance or provided to the citizens in some public forum?
So I, you know, I apologize. I don't know if somebody else can answer that question, but I literally did not hear a lot of the of the question.
Mayor, Mr. Jackson directed a question to me that is really, it's the it's the the realm of our tax assessor, John Butto. Ms. Tarlo, if I'm correct, you want information related to property assessments in certain categories and the the resulting tax revenue generated for the town. I didn't write it down as as you read it, but if you can send me the items you're looking for, we can get the data. I I'm not going to promise you that we're going to convert it into some type of visually appealing chart, but we can get the data. That's all obtainable.
Thank you for that. It's nice to hear that you'll get the data by putting it into charts that makes it easily readable and understandable for those not well versed in, you know, the tax changes here. But I'll more than happy to send you, Mr. Jackson, some two Excel chart layouts for you to consider and then for to consider how to make that public.
All right. If you would send me an email with the items that you're looking for and we'll do our best here.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Caller whose phone number ends in three five zero. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Ernest McNolley, born in Long Branch. I live at four hundred Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, apartment five D. First of all, I'd like to ask the mayor and the city manager and the city attorney. I I send a lot of emails to you all because I have important matters. And I don't mind that I don't get an answer, but what I do mind that when I file Oprah and follow up, they're being blocked or they're being sent to junk or they're being sent to trash. And I'm only left with what was probably the best city clerk in the county, who just retired, always going into trash and wherever Chief Roebuck or some of you all directed my important communications and got them out and agreed to forward them. So my question is, do you get all my emails? And that's for everybody sitting on the dais? That's for the city attorney? That's for the city business administrator? That's for the police chief and anybody else listening? Do you get my emails with attachments?
Mr. McNolley, I don't know that I've gotten any emails from you recently. I do know that you speak with my assistant on occasion, Susan Davies. She relays the information to me. I I don't know. George, have you gotten any emails from Mr. McNolley? I I have not received any.
All right. Look, look, let me let me move along before you waste all this time covering up the fact that Roebuck created a blacklist. I'm on it in two thousand and sixteen. You know well about it. Your attorneys know about it. And you're just trying to take a public persona like you always do, Mr. Mayor. I don't know. Let me check. You know exactly what's going on. Okay, let me keep going. Don't waste my time. I'm sorry. I don't want an answer. He gave me an answer. He gave me an answer. Let me move on. Roebuck, now, Roebuck versus Lapore. It was a case brought by the Public Safety Director. It went through municipal courts. Mr. Roebuck, Mr. Lapore lost. He appealed to Judge O'Brien in Superior Court October of two thousand and nineteen. Not only was the case and the decision reversed, but he criminalized then Public Safety Director backslash citizen Jason Roebuck, also known now, we're finding out on Facebook as Jason Scott. Jason Scott. That's a phony name he uses. Now, in that decision, he criminalized him in plain English. And I want to know why, since ten twenty-nine, that I brought it up so many times, you're not willing to get the court order and act on it. Everybody's asked you and you just keep saying, well, well, we're right now, we're busy promoting him and give him a twelve percent salary increase. How about getting what Judge O'Brien said? Now, the other thing is, what's going on with this on the twenty-ninth of school employees where ex-cops are now working for the school and are married to people who run the city newspapers? And you have a school employee in the tech department get arrested at the school on nine twenty-nine for five sex felonies against minors? And I can't get near a PIO, a Public Information Officer, which means somebody like Roebuck denies press even talking to us. And I sent emails to the mayor how critical this is. And let me tell you what you wound up doing. For the twenty-ninth, the thirtieth, the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, there was a press blackout. I couldn't get context. I couldn't get it in the press, et cetera. Now, finally, it appears on, in the Asbury Park Press, I worked very hard to get the records of the arrests, et cetera, and get it in there. They ran the story. And Nixel from the Ocean Town, from the Long Branch Police didn't carry it. The Monmouth County Prosecutor didn't put it up on their crime Facebook page. So here's what I'm saying. Y'all are involved in cover-ups. I mean, like the public should only know. A former lieutenant, recently retired Lieutenant Fernando Sanders, he's in North Carolina now, had a long history of beating his wife, et cetera, but now he's retired. He gets arrested in North Carolina, beating his wife again, right? And I try and appeal to the city for information. You can't do it. You can't get it in the paper. How much time do I have left, Madam Clerk?
Thirty-two seconds, sir.
Oh, my God. That's not enough. Okay, so blocked emails. I don't agree with your after going after people after they talk, like saying that Mr. Lapore is wrong about this, wrong about that. There's a lot of corruption going on with developers. Everybody knows about it and nobody can get anybody investigated. Long Branch needs an Operation Bid Rig Two investigation.
Thank you, Mr. McNolley, for your comments, sir.
Caller whose phone number ends in four three nine. Go ahead.
This is David.
Dave Brown speaking.
Yeah, I'm just calling, I'm just trying to find out. I I didn't get a copy of the tax assessment, but my taxes went up thirteen percent. And I'm just trying to figure out what went into my taxes going up thirteen percent on my on my house. That's the first question. And the second question I have, I've still not heard any response from anybody that over two years ago I was at the council meeting before y'all. And I think I came watching that and about what you were going to do on people, whatever, getting the light or I have not gotten any response back from the police department about that. And then I also brought up about sensitivity training for the police department. And my my overall concern is, and I can say it bluntly, I don't see, I see a lot of police being hired, whether it's specials or whatever, and I don't see any African Americans being hired. And this is a very diverse city and I see everyone else being hired. And then now we've gotten a little smarter, a little slicker. I see what we've we've done. We have, um, we've gotten people from the Sheriff's Department in Ocean County or people that we don't, say we don't have to train and they don't have to live in Long Branch anymore. My concern is, what are we doing about getting African Americans or more more diverse police force and then also about the sensitivity training? We have I stopped recently to the police that were hired from Ocean County. And and he's just not sensitive at all. And I was just wondering what kind of training are we doing for the police department? That's it.
Dave, I can help you with one. I can help you with one. The police department, nobody applied. Did you, did you know? Somebody asked me that question already and nobody that you mentioned applied.
But I think I think in order for it to be a diverse city, the same way the city council is diverse, you have two women, you have African American, you have a Portuguese, you have an Italian, you know, we need to, somebody had to go get them to be on the on the council. We need to do the same thing. We need to find more African Americans that are in our communities or whether it's in the school. I mean, we keep making that excuse and it's not, it's not right. We need to make sure we have everybody represented. Right now, you have one just retired, I guess knows you're retired. You're going to have a police force with no African Americans in the next eighteen months.
Dave, listen.
Or maybe one or two.
Dave, listen, um, on, uh, we had an open house for the for the specials two weeks ago. They went out and handed out pamphlets, Kim and Lance and the tenants, they went out and handed pamphlets to all the businesses, to all the churches, and they were to, they were trying to recruit as much as they could. You could go out, talk to Captain Severio or Lieutenant Evangelio. They would, they did. They went out.
And I I I understand. I've been in this community over forty years. They didn't, I didn't get a flyer. No one contacted me to ask me. I I brought the question up years ago and I continue to bring the question up. So I'm saying, I understand you can't, you're not qualified to defend them for for what they're not doing.
Right. I'm not qualified. But they, I did them.
They they didn't speak to me and I don't know how many other African Americans in the community that they spoke to during the pandemic. I mean, I'm not going to debate you, but I'm just saying that we've got to do a better job together, not not, not just the police department, but all of us. Got to do a better job at making it a more diverse police department.
Dave, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. And I did ask them for that. I did. You can ask Lieutenant Evangelio. And I did ask them, let's go out to these houses of worship and send out pamphlets.
And I did ask them, let's go out to these houses of worship and send out pamphlets. I was told they did. So I did, I tried to get as much as possible, Dave. Yes.
Dave, there are, um, for the, since we came into office and we've had this conversation with, with, uh, Councilman Dangler as well, we have, we have made a very concerted effort. You know, the problem, of course, is, you know, we keep saying it, but it's true. You know, we're a civil service town, and that's part of the issue. But Council President Viera is absolutely quite correct in that, uh, we made a very active attempt with our communications person, Lindsay, who I know you know. Uh, we've reached out, e- e- exactly as, as Councilman Viera had said. Um, if you, if you can help us, if you think you can help us, um, please do. I'd love to meet with you. If there's any way, George, I don't know if you want to jump in. I mean, this is a discussion George and I had just the other day, and we met with a special two officer to see if there's any way we could, uh, assist him with getting on the force, as well as, as people in the fire department. I mean, George, do you want to add anything to this? You have all this experience with.
Mr. Brown, thank you for your comments, sir.
Civil service situation.
Sure, Mayor. Just one thing, uh, to Mr. Brown's point about the diversity of the department, and as Council President Viera said, you know, when we get the list, we have to live by that list. It's a civil service list. It's not a test that's run by the city itself. It's done by the state of New Jersey. And one of the requirements is residency. Uh, once that list is compiled and issued, uh, the, the police department is bound to follow that list. There are rules about skipping people. Veterans get preference, disabled veterans get absolute preference. So there, there are very strict guidelines that dictate, uh, the hiring practices of the department. In my former career, I was the chief in a department that wasn't civil service. Uh, some may say that's too subjective, but it gave us great latitude in recruiting officers outside the town and from different, uh, different sectors of the community. And we made a concerted effort to hire African-American officers. We hired several in my town. But that was because we had that latitude and the ability to reach out and not follow those strict guidelines that come with being a civil service community. Uh, the city has reached out, uh, looking for intergovernmental transfers. Uh, the responses were minimal. There are officers from other municipalities where agencies that are civil service that might be interested in coming to work for the city. I'm only aware of one that's occurred, um, in the last two years that I've worked here. It was someone from another town in Monmouth County. So, uh, i- it's an uphill battle. We really need, uh, the diverse people that live in our city, and again, they have to live in the city to apply for that test when it's made available. If they're not on the list, we can't go around the list. It's just something that can't be done with the system that we work under right now. And it's, it's really unfortunate. I will tell you that given the, uh, the situation in our, in our, uh, our country today, and here in the state of New Jersey, my belief is that our legislature will amend the civil service rules. Uh, there are bills pending about diversity in police departments and government agencies. I think you're going to see some changes. They're going to have to get creative to get rid of a system, or at least amend a system that's been around for decades. Um, you know, we have to get, catch up with the times, and that may be an important step. Thank you, Mayor.
I see no other hands raised.
Thanks, Will. Madam Clerk, have you received any public comments by electronic mail or written letters?
No, Council President.
I need a motion to close the public portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We can take a list of resolutions as a consent, an agenda. Need a motion? Sir? Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes. Application is none. Miscellaneous, business for good of the order. Councilman Dangler.
Uh, no, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vogt?
So I would just, um, very quickly like to mention a resource, um, for people. This, um, actually comes from, um, Monmouth County social service, uh, organizations. It's, uh, called Monmouth Acts. I'm going to send this tomorrow to the mayor's office to post, um, on our website, on the city website. But it is specifically for people who are facing financial hardships, um, directly related to COVID, to be able to get assistance in terms of financial support, uh, income tax assistance, housing assistance, workforce training, nutrition assistance, and childcare resources. Um, it has the number, the number I'll give you right now, which is seven three two six eight three eight nine five nine, seven three two six eight three eight nine five nine, to call for any support with those types of services. And again, uh, we'll post it on the, um, uh, on the city website, just in terms of all of us trying to help, help our neighbors, help each other, other to get, uh, to get through this pandemic. Um, wish you all well, and we'll see you again in two weeks. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wittes?
Yes, I'd like to just say good evening and thank you for listening and everyone who called in um, with your comments. And please, if you have any concerns, reach out to us. Um, you know, our email addresses are listed on the website, and we'd be happy to hear from you. And with that, I'd just like to wish everyone well and be safe. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selly?
I have just a couple of things that I've said it over and over and over again. Wear your mask, social distance, and stay safe, and good night.
Thank you. Mayor Palone?
Yes, I just had two announcements I'd like to make. Uh, let, let everybody know that we have a cleanup at Jackson Woods uh, this Saturday, October seventeenth, from nine AM to one PM. Uh, please join us for a day to clean up, uh, one of our parks, and we have prizes, uh, and food for uh, those that participate. When I say food, we have, uh, uh, gift certificates. And, uh, also, we're, we're excited about our senior center will begin Zoom classes starting on October twenty-sixth. So check out our social media, find out how you can stay connected and participate uh, in our programs, both virtually and safely. And with that, I just want to let, thank everybody for joining us today. Stay safe and, uh, have a great, uh, have a great week.
Thank you, Mayor Palone. And I'd like to thank everybody for participating in our meeting tonight, and stay safe and good night. I adj, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Good night.